Welcome, everyone, to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is Tuesday, March 17th, 2020. Happy St. Patrick's Day. We'll begin by asking everyone to please silence all electronic devices. We turn to Councilmember Harold Owen for tonight's invocation.
Dear Heavenly Father, be present now to people who need your loving care impacted by the 19 virus. May they feel your power of healing through the care of doctors and nurses. Take away the anxiety and fear and feelings of isolation created by the virus. Give people a purpose, a sense of purpose in pursuing health and protecting others from exposure to the disease and helping each other. We pray for our many medical providers, our medical researchers, and our first responders as they provide services to so many individuals impacted with this situation. In your name we pray, amen.
Before we jump into the bulk of our agenda, we do have a special consideration this evening towards the adoption of a remote participation policy during declared states of emergency. This has been prepared by Attorney Huffman. It will be presented at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is an unusual policy in the sense that this has been brought on by the circumstances, namely the governor's state of emergency that has been declared. But this is something that the city council has looked at previously, and at this point in time, I have drafted something that hopefully would meet your requirements. It's based on a policy that allows for individuals, one or two of you at a time, to meet with the group remotely away out of the building here. This has been drafted pursuant to the state statutes for states of emergencies as well as the city code that also allows for the mayor and council members to call for a state of emergency here in the city alone. The most important thing to recognize is it's only applicable during those periods of time when there is a declared state of emergency. That's number one. And number two is it has to meet certain other very narrowly drawn criteria, and primarily that is a councilman desiring to participate in a meeting remotely must assert one or more of the following reasons for being physically unable to attend the meeting, and one would be personal illness, disability, or the threat thereof, which is the situation we're now facing now in this state of emergency, as well as a family or other emergency of some sort. Just a couple of highlights. I know that I've prepared this and sent to you the initial draft yesterday. I appreciate you taking a look at it, each and every one of you, and also I appreciate your feedback because I have made a couple of small changes as a result of that. This remote participation is drawn narrowly so that we will avoid any challenges by way of anyone saying we didn't have a proper quorum present at any of our meetings. That's why I think it was going to require, or the better practice would be at any and all times, that at least three individuals be in the meeting room where the meeting is called under this policy. And there are certain provisions that simply, situations where there is a quasi-judicial hearing. This is not a proper type of hearing for a remote participation by any council member, and that therefore it would not apply in those situations. It would apply in sessions of closed session. I have looked into this. Two issues of concern would be issues of confidentiality, one, and number two is the technology. Do we have the technology because we actually moved from this room into a separate room? I am assured by staff that we do have that technology available, so I'm moving forward there. The other part, what you would read in the first paragraph of number four, "Remote participation shall be allowed during closed sessions of the city council, provided that the council member participating remotely is in such a location and environment to assure the confidentiality for which the purpose of the closed session is called pursuant to NCGS 143-31811." And that would be a situation where the council member would simply have to put himself or herself in a position that no one, if you're in a closed session talking about personnel issues or negotiating over a contract, you'd, obviously, you can see the confidentiality aspect of that, and if that can't be assured, I don't think that that member would want to participate anyway. Other than that, the provisions are pretty much the same that we, that I have discussed in, with you and provided to you in the first draft of this. If you have any questions, be glad to handle them.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council regarding this proposal?
Just for clarification purposes, because this is one of the talking points that we obviously had in coming up with this, and this is, this policy is not so unlike our TAC, for instance, this afternoon. Our TAC was held via WebEx.
Yes.
So in times like these, that's very important, but this policy is written so that not just in case we're traveling or we're out and about doing something that we can say we're not going to be there and call in, this is very much so for a state of emergency or if, if the mayor under chapter 10 was to call a state of emergency for the city.
Correct.
And it's, so it's very narrow in scope and purpose for exactly what we're having to deal with right now.
Yes, it is. And you mentioned the way you were able to call in at the TAC meeting. That is under a separate state statute, and it's provided for basically state agencies.
Correct.
We, as a city, do not have that enabling legislation. It may be something that needs to be looked into, and I'm pretty sure that following what we're going through here in the upcoming sessions of the legislature, it probably will be looked into.
Any other questions or comments from council regarding this policy? Do I hear a motion to adopt and approve the presented policy?
I make a motion that we adopted as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed.
Mayor and Council, I believe Councilmember Ward is wanting to call in this. He gave the proper notice to the city clerk in the event that this, this policy passed. Madam Clerk, is he on the line?
Yes, we tested with him and we set up a heightened so we can call in should this call be adopted.
Okay, so since it's been adopted, can we bring Councilmember Ward into the meeting?
The old zoom.
While that's happening, we'll comment, as stated by Attorney Huffman, we recognize that during these, these trying times, some populations are more vulnerable than others, and so we wanted to create this policy to enable folks to practice safe behaviors and improve the safety of our ability to continue governing the community.
Enter your participant ID. You are in the meeting now. There are two participants in the meeting.
That would be our new host.
You cannot listen or talk until the host releases the hold. This meeting is being recorded.
Bob?
Unique new challenges. Appreciate everyone's patience.
Please go check in as soon as they connect.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, under the policy that you've just adopted, under number one, it would probably be appropriate for Mr. Ward, when he does check in here, that he ask that, and articulate that, I think we've already really said it, that it's, well, there is a state of emergency, we know that, it's in place, and I believe the threat of personal illness under the circumstances is the basis for it, and he may want to confirm that, or you may want to confirm that with him.
I'll confirm that with him. And just while we're talking about that, the state of emergency, I don't know that you fully illustrated it, but it can be a national, a state, or a city, or county or state of emergency, so.
Yes, I'm on.
There he is. Hey, Bob, this is Ian. Welcome.
Ian, good. Okay, thanks. Are we finally connected up?
We are connected.
I'm sorry for the delay from my end. I'm electronically challenged, okay?
That's all right. This is new territory for all of us. Before we officially move on on the agenda, I just want to confirm that you are calling in via remote service in order to protect your own safety during this state of emergency. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Councilmember Ward. At this time, we will recognize interim city clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council?
I'm sorry.
We're going to do the Code of Ethics statement. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Okay. Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
No.
None.
Thank you.
Very good. Next on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Before council, is it agenda, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as put forth?
Hopefully adopt the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about them, please let us know. Item A, to adopt an ordinance to approve the following traffic commission recommendations. The details of those are spelled out in your agenda. Item B, to approve a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission to apply for a Historic Preservation Fund grant to facilitate surveying the existing historic districts and possible expansion of areas to determine historical significance and eligibility. Item C, to authorize the city of Burlington to retain Stout, Stewart, McGowan, and King LLP for services for the fiscal year 1920 annual audit. Item D, to award link transit to be, to allow link transit to be fare-free for the National Get On Board Day on April 16th, 2020. Item E, to approve a professional engineering services agreement between the city of Burlington and Ramey Kemp &amp; Associates for staff services and transportation engineering and operations in the city's transportation department. Item F, to award a one-year contract extension to TransDev Services, Inc., at a rate of $52.92 per passenger trip for the paratransit service of link transit effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Item G, to award a one-year contract extension to TransDev Services, Inc., at a rate of $52.46 per revenue hour for the fixed route service of link transit effective July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. That concludes the items of our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the consent agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion is passed. Next, we have three public hearings this evening. The first public hearing has been set to consider an initial zoning of properties that were annexed into the city. The properties are located at 1714 and 1746 Carolina Mill Road and 1717 Carolina Road, referenced as Alaman's County Tax Identification Numbers, 141250, 141252, 141253, 141254, 141255, 149770, 149771, 149772, 149774, 149775, 149776, 149863, and a portion of 141146. The proposed zoning for the properties is LI, Light Industrial District property. At this time, we recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, we bring before you, every zone cases, you just went through the several parcels of property. This is the old, former, excuse me, former Kirkland Mills Fabrics property. Here you see it hatched in the blue hatch along the Hall River here. They ran access to the city in May of 2017. This is the initial zoning. This is the city's process to place the initial zoning. This wasn't a request specific by anyone, but this was an initial zoning in coordination with the owner. But the request is to rezone the 18.43 acres into the Light Industrial District. This is a former industrial site, as I mentioned. The comprehensive plan calls for the area south of the property to be rural residential agricultural. I mention that for this purpose. Although it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan, the property is consistent and adjacent to commercial and industrial zoning, and light industrial is the most compatible with the adjacent areas. That was the reason for the staff recommendation. The planning and zoning commission unanimously approved this request February 24th at their meeting. Staff also recommends this as well. Again, I remind you, should you have the public hearing, your consistency statement would be option two. Staff points that out, that it's not consistent with the land use plan, but is most compatible with what's in the area. And I can answer any questions you have.
Any questions from council regarding this public hearing item? All right. Thank you, Mike. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this item on our agenda. Peggy Nolan?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Some vote.
Second. All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear any questions regarding this or a motion? And I will state, as Mike mentioned, council has been provided with a state of conditions and motions for and against, and consistent and inconsistent on this property, and that is shown on their blue sheets. Do I hear a motion from council?
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion. I move we approve the request for initial zoning of property recently annexed into the city. Property is located at 1714 and 1746 Carolina Mill Road and 717 Carolina Road, as referenced as, as referenced as Alaman's County Tax Identification Numbers, 141250, 141252, 141253, 141254, 141255, 149770, 149771, 149772, 149774, 149775, 149776, 149863, and a portion of 141146. Proposed zoning for the property is in Light Industrial District. This motion is based upon the inconsistency of the proposed, of the proposed zoning with the comprehensive plan, in that the future land use map in section four, land use of the comprehensive plan calls for the area to the south to have rural residential slash agricultural uses, and the property is adjacent to industrial and commercial zoning, and proposed zoning allows for compatible land uses in that area. We believe this action is reasonable in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for rural residential slash agricultural uses and proposed zoning is compatible with the land use areas and, land uses in the area, as had been stated by Mr. Nun earlier.
Thank you for that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'd like to congratulate Harold on that motion. One second. It's a lot of parcel IDs, so.
Any questions regarding the motion as stated to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All is opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you, Mike. Public hearing number two on our agenda, public hearing has been set to consider amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance. At this time, we'll again recognize Director of Planning and Transportation, Mike Nun.
Good evening again, Mayor and council. We bring before you, I guess, our second quarterly updates. We talked about, as we adopted this, just a little update here for you in July, effective in November. We've mentioned at that time, as with all UDOs, especially across the nation, you're always going to have amendments and updates. It's over a 700-page document. So we are deep into using the document and come back to you with the number four item here, the second round of amendments, which is this evening. The planning board reviewed those on February 24th and has, have a unanimous recommendation for you when I'm going to go over. And then, of course, we've discussed these in detail with you at your March work session. So I wanted to be brief on these, be glad to answer any questions. Again, they're major, basically edits and comments. You have a red line that we use at the work session, and that we do track all changes and keep it with what's changed and what was originally there. Just another question about how we made those changes. Substantive, substantive changes, I'm going to go through, chapter two, because they are, they're key changes. We had a written notice of decision. We had all these regulations and processes, and we did not have a key way to inform the applicant of, here's what was decided. So this will simply be a written document to say, this is what was approved, this is what you're allowed to do. And that's in chapter two. In chapter four, we changed a principal use table for a pharmacy. We felt a pharmacy was a permitted use instead of a special use permit in a neighborhood district, which is NB, and again, the LI, Light Industrial Districts. Pharmacies are pretty convenient things to have around. Didn't understand why there was a special use permit. Accessory uses, these are, I'll say accessory buildings, not so much additions, but we felt like in a commercial district needed to comply with the design standards of what the primary building was, instead of having a different looking accessory use out to the side. So that's in chapter five. Again, just to look similar to what's already there. Again, in chapter five, we added screen requirements for outdoor stores of impounded vehicles. Did not have anything specific there. As you can imagine, that is a, a strong screening, so you cannot see those from the street. Chapter six and subdivisions of design standards, did not have landscaping for what I call the edges and the street yards. You could basically have had a subdivision that, you know, the homeowners could do their home, but you didn't have a standard for the subdivision entryway or around the street yard of that. So we put those into the subdivision requirements. Chapter seven, the next two were just state permit, state regulation requirements, soil erosion and sedimentation requirements, used their exact language, not ours. Definitions, we added a definition, again, just information of a detached carport and garage. That was not in there. Explained to what that needed to be. We also added again for flood hazard overlay state statute text and requirement straight from the state statute. Tonight, this evening, any questions you have, we'd ask, recommend that you consider this amendment after the public hearing. We also, also want to mention to you again, the option one on your consistency statement, which we approve these this evening. And after that, staff will move forward with the changes as stated tonight, and we'll produce a new revised UDO document. I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from council before we begin the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak regarding this item. If you would like to speak regarding this item, if you could step to the microphone. Welcome. If you could state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Jose Molina, and I live on 413 Halley Long Lane here in Burlington.
And are you speaking regarding this agenda item? I know you also signed up for public.
Yes.
Okay.
It's kind of related. I saw like landscaping and new construction, so that's why before anything gets approved, we would like to, you know, get our point across the table.
Excellent. Please proceed.
So, members of council, Mayor, nice meeting you here. Everybody, our, our neighborhood, I'm going to speak on behalf of my neighbors and myself. We have in a construction going on in our neighborhood. The construction is the Way Journey Homes, and they're building new homes, which is a great thing, but we have some issues with water draining, and we have already contacted, I have myself and some of my neighbors have contacted engineer department. Also, we have contacted building department and storm and water department. It seems like they couldn't help us. They say their hands are tied, they cannot make them do the right thing. What is being proposed is to throw the water of eight to nine lots into two of the lots on the bottom and bring new homes that have been built. Mr. Craig here is one of the owners of those homes, and it's going to be, I mean, it's already affected with all the water draining down, and with the way they're doing the construction, it's just going to get even worse. They're trying to dig a ditch between two properties and throwing all that water down in between the properties, creating, I will call it a swamp, after a drain, after a rain. And, and we have contacted all departments before we get to this point, and we have, you know, asked for help on those issues. They, it seems like they are not either willing to help, and what we, what we believe as a neighborhood is that the city departments have failed us, and it's not looking for the interest of the already established citizens, and it's looking more towards the interest of a builder. I know last meeting, from what I understand, there was a, you, you had a meeting about the, the drain problems and sharing the expenses between homeowners and the city, 50/50, 20/80. Before anything of that gets approved, we as citizens would like the city to consider on fixing that issue where builders come to build, and they will take care of what needs to be taken care of with the water and anything that relates to the safety of everybody in the neighborhood, because what it seems like, two of my neighbors are going to be really, really affected to that, and that's why we stand here today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Molina. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else on this side of the room who'd like to speak regarding this ordinance? If you could state your name and address.
Yes, my name is Debbie Horner, and my address is 425 Halley Long Lane. I too live in that neighborhood over there, and we care about our neighborhood. And right now, a few weeks ago, when we had all the rains, there was some severe flooding over there, and we met with the builder, we talked with him, and we told him what we wanted him to do, to put in a catch basin and run it underground, the piping to the storm drains, so all the water won't be resting on top of the ground, because it is a swamp down there. And they've done a little bit of grading, but what they graded, part of it has been graded right onto my property, and we're just not happy with what they want to do. And we want you guys to do something to hold them accountable, so that our property's not flooded all the time, every time it rains, and we don't want our property values to go down. We don't want our properties to be hard to sell because there's water problems over there all the time, and they're consistently building, they're building now, they've already put up seven.
Seven.
Seven houses in the last two weeks. Seven houses. That's a lot of water, a lot of properties, and we just want you guys to do something. You know, we're all taxpayers, we pay our taxes, we try to do what we can to keep our neighborhood like it ought, like neighborhoods should be, and we don't want a builder coming in and doing, making a mess, and then driving away and leaving us there to handle it, because we don't think that this is our problem. I think they need to be doing something to handle it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Horner. Anyone else on this side of the room would like to speak regarding ordinances? All right. Do you, do you want to?
I don't necessarily want to speak. I just have pictures, and I just want to know if I can send them to either one of you?
Yeah, you can submit them to the clerk after the meeting, and she'll make sure we get copies of them. Thank you very much, so. All right. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Second. All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Are there any questions for Mike Nun? I will, Mike, we're not making any major amendments, anything regarding stormwater in this set of ordinance, correct? Okay. All right. So, all right. Do I hear a motion or any questions from council? Council has been presented, as Mike mentioned, with recommended motions regarding the consistency of these amendments on their yellow sheets. Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve this request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed amendments with the comprehensive plan, in that section four, land use goal one, recommendation five of the comprehensive plan, calls for an update of the Unified Development Ordinance. Section four, land use goal one, recommendation five of the comprehensive plan, calls for ensuring sound land planning decisions that are consistent with the vision of the plan. I believe this action is reasonable and in the public interest in that section four, land use goal two, recommendation four of the comprehensive plan, addresses confusion, conflicts, and obsolescence of the zoning code through a new uniformed, unified- conflicts, and obsolescence of the zoning code through a new uniformed Unified Development Ordinance. Section Four, Land Use Goal Two, Recommendation Four of the Comprehensive Plan, a new UDO will be modern, graphically intensive, and user-friendly, from both a public petitioner and administrative perspective.
Thank you for that motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve as consistent? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion is passed. Thank you very much.
Mayor, just for clarification, just so everybody's real clear, this Unified Development Ordinance has nothing to do with our stormwater policy that we've been referencing.
Yep.
So I just want to be sure everyone's real clear.
And we will come back to your points. I know you signed up for public comment, so we'll dig into that a little more when we get to that point, but, all right. The motion is passed. That item is complete. Our third public hearing, and I do want to add one other item on that. As Mike presented in his presentation, this is a quarterly revisit on these ordinances, so we'll plan to have additional ordinance tweaks as we go and continue using this new UDO. So we'll expect some more in about three months from now. Item three on our public hearing. The public hearing has been set to consider amending Chapters Two, Fourteen, Twenty-two, and Thirty-seven of the City of Burlington Code of Ordinances. This time, we recognize Assistant City Manager of Development Services, Nolan Kirkman. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. In an effort to improve neighborhoods and the effectiveness of code enforcement, minimum housing, and inspections efforts and processes, staff is proposing revisions to Chapters Two, Fourteen, Twenty-two, and Thirty-seven of the City Code of Ordinances. These proposed changes relate to substandard housing processes, housing quality nuisances, as well as substandard non-residential structures. As you recall, staff reviewed these proposed changes in detail with council at the March Second Work Session. Please note that Chapters Two and Twenty-two involve revisions to the existing chapters, while Fourteen and Thirty-seven are comprehensive rewrites. In summary terms, the proposed revisions involve the following. Chapter Two, Administration, it modifies the duties of the Housing Commission. That would shift the hearings of appeals for housing orders to the Board of Adjustment. Chapter Fourteen, Housing, it would incorporate additional compliance references as it relates to the general statutes. It modifies how violations impact unfit status. Updates posting method, directs appeals to the Board of Adjustment, and adjusts the range of penalties. Now, Chapter Twenty-two with nuisances includes openly kept indoor furniture as a nuisance and clarifies open spaces, and provides for compliance extension, and defines abatement costs more clearly. Chapter Thirty-seven, Unsafe Non-Residential Building, that section establishes enforceable minimum standards, as well as major unsafe conditions. It updates procedures, it provides for ability for city action when owner abandons an order. It directs appeals and order adjustment, allows for more restrictive order after a two-year vacancy, and allows for city abatement of unsafe condition presenting imminent danger. I'd like to note that Mr. Huffin and Ms. Booker were very instrumental in getting these changes together, that we feel will have a positive impact for our community. Mr. Huffin, Mr. Nunn, and I will be glad to try to answer any questions you may have related to these proposed changes.
The last chapter that you made reference to was Chapter?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven. Thirty-seven.
Any other questions from council before we begin the public hearing? This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak regarding these four chapters of the Code of Ordinances. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion is passed. Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding Chapters Two, Fourteen, Twenty-two, and Thirty-seven?
I'd make a motion that we adopt the ordinance changes for Chapter Two, Fourteen, Twenty-two, and Thirty-seven as stated.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to adopt? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion is passed. That concludes our public hearings for this evening and our regular agenda items. Now we move to our public comment period. Mr. Molina, you do have five minutes to speak during this public comment period. Is there any additional information you'd like to share with council? I know you mentioned that your topics overlap, so if there's any additional points or?
Yeah, I just want to apologize, because I just got concerned that that was the thing. So yes, as you heard, that they even built, you know, Way Journey Home is just doing its thing. We're just concerned about our neighborhood on that, especially when I see that the city's about to move forward on something of the drain and sewer problems, having homeowners have to pay 50%, and the city will pay 50%. We, as the taxpayers, we don't want the city to be paying any money on any repairs that was supposed to be done by the builders. Same thing with the homeowners. I mean, we don't have that kind of money that we can be spreading around. So that's what we, that's why we're here, and we brought out these points to individual departments within the city to have them help. I even spoke with a meter reading guy, just to tell you how many people I have talked to. I see the seal of the city in a truck, and I will pull him over and say, are you one of the builders, I mean, one of the people in charge of this? I have asked for the person who's in charge. I have been sent from one office to a different office to a different office, and we got to a point that, as Debbie's mentioned, we met with the builder. He just didn't meet our, the needs for the safety of our neighborhood, and that's why we decided to come here and make you aware of what's going on within the departments of the city. And if an amendment, change, rule, law have to be made for this to be stopped, of the builders coming into our city and just wreck everybody else's property like what they did to Miss Debbie, they took down some trees, small trees, but they took them down, build a burn on her properties, on top of her property, her fence goes back five feet to where the property line is, and that's what we stand. It seems like these people, they come and do what they have to do, do what they want to do, and run over everybody else in order to have what they need, what they need, and it seems like the city, well, the departments, don't have either the power or don't want to do it. There has to be a change of that, and especially about sharing the cost.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm going to ask that you speak with City Manager Harden Watkins, following tonight's meeting, and get a little more information, and then he'll follow up and he'll make a presentation to council of what he finds and what he suggests, so we appreciate you.
I think you've got to the right department.
Yeah.
Thank you. We have been pulling too many strings. I mean, we, I got tired of that.
Well, we appreciate your diligence. You shouldn't have to run around to that many departments to get a straight answer, and so I'm sorry about your experience, but I have full faith that Harden will help you work through this.
It was a good thing, because I met all three directors, and that was a good thing.
Everybody there.
If you're looking for a job, we're always hiring good folks who want to make our city better.
Just give me the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molina. We appreciate you all coming this evening, Seth. That concludes our public comment. At this time, city council comments. Do I hear any comments from city council?
If I could on this situation, this is often when plans are presented, they look great on paper, but then when construction starts, things tend to go maybe south what we expected. And this is not a point in blaming anyone here, but it's happened numerous times, so I appreciate you people coming out and making this known, and hopefully the staff can work with everybody involved, the builder and the residents, to take the situation and correct it now, because later on, it's going to be much tougher to correct.
Yep.
So this is the time to get it done, and I certainly appreciate you guys coming out tonight. To Harold's point on that, I mean, we obviously have a lot of emphasis, we're putting on stormwater, and we've seen things in recent months and years with regards to stormwater we haven't seen in the past. It's, it's a little bit different environment that we're in, and sometimes the whole process can be a little complicated, a little complicated, and we greatly understand that, but at the end of the day, just knowing what we need and to be sure we've got city staff really taking a look at it, because we don't want a developer to leave us an alert jive. I mean, that's, that's it in a nutshell, and there's policies in place, and one person's interpretation and another person's might be a little uniquely different, but I concur. We need to really look into this at a pretty high level, and I'd like to hear a report back as well.
Excellent.
Just real quick.
No.
Just so council does know, we have issued staff two notice of violations on this particular site, one to the builder for clearing more than he should have cleared, and another one to the developer for clearing into the buffer. So there are some efforts ongoing related to this, but there are some restrictions and limitations with ordinances that, you know, you know, create some issues in terms of?
So if we issue a notice of citation because they cleared more than they were supposed to, what, what is the repercussions?
I'd probably need to get Todd Lambert to give some detail on that, because he deals with that on a regular basis. There would be, there would be a compliance period and potential penalties.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if, if someone's opportunistic, and they understand that a notice of violation is not as significant as I can, I can get what I want here. We need to be sure that we're doing what's right on our end. We've got a UDO that we want to be clear and graphic and all the terms that we're talking about, but the penalties need to be clear and graphic.
Yeah, and our erosion control ordinance, our stormwater ordinance follows to the state model for ordinances, so those types of penalties are?
It would appear to me that if they took something down that they weren't supposed to take down, they need to put something back.
That's what, notice of violations is for, and staff's working with them to get those things corrected. But we certainly can provide some more information on what that means in terms of violations, so.
Thank you, Owen.
Yep.
Other council comments this evening?
I've got one other item, just from a, just from a concern, overall concern standpoint, and I know city staff's on it as well, but the, the impact of the coronavirus crisis on the health side is where a lot of attention is, but there's an economic side, too, that's certainly going to have some significant impact on our revenue stream, as a, as what we depend on for budgetary items. Certainly, it's going to hit us a little later, there's lag time to sales tax collection and those types of things. And I know we've done a lot of modeling on, on kind of departmental, what should be open, what should be shut down, and I think the city's done a wonderful job. I mean, the pandemic plan is very well done, but I think we need to put a fair amount of effort on the economic sort of modeling, what our, what our revenue streams are going to look like, to see if we need to make some potential budgetary adjustments before, ahead of the curve, rather than us get, get blindsided after the fact and our revenues be weighing arrears. Just, that's my thoughts on it. I'd like to know if anybody agrees, disagrees, but I'd like to see us do that.
I share your concerns, Jim. That's something I think we need to be proactive on. Council members?
And actually, we've got a full quarter left of sales tax that we have not, well, more than a quarter, at least four months, that will be impacted in this fiscal year, but, you know, well, no one knows, but we also got to be conscious of this as we adopt the budget for the next fiscal year.
Correct.
Not, you know, trying to determine, and this is going to be a, there's no guarantee how to do this, but what will the impact be? And I know there's awful, a lot of comments being made out there about the situation now, but, you know, I don't think any of us have seen anything like this before. So I think it's, if one is going to take an awful lot of study and consideration, because this is, this is 9/11 on steroids in some ways.
It's 9/11 combined with 8/19.
Yes. Yeah, this is all coming in together here, and I certainly, none of our business, but certainly hope this, this will be worked on, because we had an awful lot of local small businesses, this, like, very going to be impacted by this. And I'm not sure about you guys, but I don't ever recall in a number of years seeing the lack of traffic on the city streets in the last three days.
Yeah.
Than I've seen in the last three days. So I think this is something that every city and every county is going to have to take a hard look at as we go forward. Well, that's good from a health and human services standpoint. It's good the traffic's down, but from livelihood and?
From what drives the economy for our city.
It's, so it's, it's really a catch-22, and we need to be sure that we're doing our piece, but, you know, we just have to trust God to have His hands on it, but let's be sure we've got our eyes on the ball from a budgetary standpoint.
And on that note, a couple other points. I would say we're blessed that we have LabCorp in our city, and we're blessed that they're a leader in this, this current situation, helping make sure that testing is accessible. Burlington's been a national leader throughout many times in our history, and we continue to be as, as we help the nation and the world weather the storm. For anyone with questions about coronavirus or COVID-19, I encourage you to go to alamance-n-c.com/covid19. That has resources for all of Alamance County. Local governments like Burlington are working together with the county and the state and the federal government to make sure that we have coordinated response to these ever-changing times, and you can find up-to-date, up-to-the-minute information on that website. Again, that's alamance-n-c.com/covid19. Also, there's a hotline available for Alamance County if you have specific questions or concerns. It's 336-290-0361. Again, 336-290-0361, if anyone has any questions about anything regarding the current situation, how to find treatment, or other concerns as far as delivery of services. And lastly, the best way to stay up to date for the city is to follow us on Facebook and Twitter and check out the latest alerts. This is ever-changing, and we want everyone to be as informed as possible as things evolve. On lighter notes, I will mention, as I have in the last couple of meetings, it is census time, and in folks' extra spare time that you might find yourself in, you should have received an envelope in the mail with a blue sheet in it. They also did a second mailing with another blue sheet in it. That's your census form. There's a special code on that sheet. These went to every single address in the city, and so there's instructions there to go online and complete your census, or you can also request a form to mail in. It's census time, and we hope that everyone completes that, despite all the other events going on in our community. And then one last item, I recently returned from our National League of Cities Legislative Congressional Cities Conference in DC last week. It very quickly became a medical conference as we heard the latest updates on coronavirus, and I brought back these pins for all of our council members. What we were talking about up there was leading together, at the time, talking about infrastructure and community safety, and all the things that cities are trying to lead and work with the federal government to do. And I think the leading together mantra is even more important as we look at fighting the coronavirus, which is that we're all in this together. All of us are working hand-in-hand with our residents, and I think it's this time in particular that we need to look to our neighbors, look to our family and our friends, and see who needs support, who needs help, and how can we each pitch in to make sure we weather this together.
Mayor, if I could, just a second. What Jim said, the document that staff put together concerning this issue is, is very thorough, took an awful lot of people, put an awful lot of time in this, and I want to thank the entire staff for this. This is, this is really good work. It's something that just didn't happen overnight. And there was no training for this, was it, Harden?
So, sir, Harden, are there any updates or comments you want to share regarding the coronavirus? If you would step to the microphone and?
So I'll do a quick update, and thank you all for the kind of comments. We've got a wonderful staff team, as you all know, very dedicated, very committed to their community, committed to doing their jobs, committed to providing services. At the same time, we want to make sure and ensure the safety of our coworkers, our colleagues, and we want to make sure and ensure the safety of the folks we interact with on a daily basis, and not create unnecessary contacts. I think we've I think we've all learned the phrase "social distancing" that probably was not in anybody's vocabulary 60 days ago, to be honest with you, and it's a regular conversation now. Quick update, it's been a busy few days for our team preparation. They've done a wonderful job, but it's a daily process for us at the leadership level, but within the depths of each of our departments, our division leaders, our department leaders, folks in the departments are all contributing, as Mr. Owen remarked, we've got a great team. And they're working hard. I want to give them kudos for their hard work and their serious brain power this is, thinking through all the things that you do, thinking about things that you might not do going into the future, required you to think about everything that you do. And it's amazing how much we touch people's lives on a daily basis. It makes you proud, it also makes you sad that some of those things we're not going to be able to do for a while for the good of our health. But we have convened a coronavirus task force that meets daily of our city, some key staff people here at the city. It's a small group to stay nimble, stay focused on what we're doing, what the latest developments are. Convened a meeting on Saturday night, we had a meeting again Sunday morning, so that's not, I don't think anybody planned to be here this past weekend, again, 60 days ago as well. But our department head leaders, our department leaders are also meeting weekly as a department group, but also they're meeting daily with their individual departments. As you all know, the Emergency Operations Center has been activated in Alamance County. We're actively and fully participating in that, have been engaged in all of those sessions. I will also issue a kind word to Stacy Saunders, who's our Alamance County Public Health Director. If you have not worked with Stacy, she's amazing and incredible. And to have somebody in the leadership role that she's in in a time like this is really reassuring and we're really, really happy to be working with her. And so she's sort of leading the effort on that side as the subject matter expert and also speaking for the state. So the way that organized is that she's sort of ringing messages from the state as well as understanding our local area. But our leadership focus, as I said, has been ensuring and reviewing readiness and having contingency plans for our operations heavy departments. That's been our focus this week. Departments have been identifying which folks are mission critical and we want to be able to provide the services that we're normally providing, but doing so, is there some ways folks can work from home? Are there different ways to provide services, setting up phone numbers for folks to call us versus having to see us? That's good for them and good for us. So we're making plans that we can allow some folks to handle their work not in this building or not in their normal buildings, but our goal is to do that by being able to provide the same level of service as close we can in those contexts. So we're happy about how that progress is going. We're also going to be issuing some staggered work hours, so we're going to try to get the work done. So some people may be coming in, the early birds will come in early, folks who prefer to work later can work later. We're also open to folks getting their work done on the weekends and that sort of thing just to sort of reduce contact in the building. Again, but our goal is to try to provide as many services as we can. I want to also just share the words of Dr. Dan Hendrickson, who's our occupational health physician, and he's been sort of our steady voice of thinking about safety and keeping folks clean, keeping everything clean in the community. What he's saying is just to remind us, you know, that if we can reduce the social interaction, it helps flatten the curve and spread the virus. And that advice, obviously, at the end of the day, is going to help us save lives. So as we know, younger folks, to borrow the words of Stacy Saunders, may feel crummy for a while, but they're going to recover. It's folks that are over 65 or have some chronic health issues or some things they're fighting on the health side that can really suffer the consequences and we want to do that on their behalf. And so Dr. Hendrickson, every email he sends me sort of wraps it up with "chance favors the prepared." So we've sort of used that as part of our mantra. So, and Mr. Mayor, there's going to be a slew of announcements. Our communication folks, as you know, do a wonderful job, so folks just stay tuned to our website, Twitter sites, and social media sites. We'll keep them informed as things are, hours are changing or things are changing. But our goal is to try to do as much as we can, but to do that with the safety of everyone in mind.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Councilmember Ward, as we conclude, are there any comments you'd like to share with us?
I'd like to just simply say I really thank the staff for all of their hard work, you know, making preparations, you know, to address this pandemic, this Corona pandemic. I know they'll continue to work hard and look after our citizens. And final comment, I hope all of you stay safe and I hope to see all of you soon.
Thank you, councilmember. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? City council is adjourned. Thank you, councilmember Ward, for joining us. Thank you all.
Thank you.